All right. Welcome, everybody, to our second of the month meeting. Right? Trying to keep these short, to the point, conduct business, and kind of keep everything moving along. With that, I'd like to call the meeting the order with the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those that are hearing a lot of noise in the background, if it's coming through when you watch this on Panda, which is here recording, there's, as you haven't noticed, there's a lot of work going on here around Village Hall right now with new sidewalks going in, new aprons for driveways, new AD8 ramps on at crosswalks, and it's all good things. So you're seeing, you're hearing progress happening here in the Village of Reinken. All right, first on the agenda, the firehouse apron upgrade. This is a new proposal, and it came about as a result of all the work that I just talked about with the new sidewalks and everything going on, where now an opportune time to take advantage of, while things are being ripped up, work on the fire, work on the apron as well. So there's like 30 feet by whatever out there that needs to be replaced. We have a task order from Thai Yvonne to do the work. The task order comes in at, let me go back here. Seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty, which includes a bidding and the construction observation. So there's like 5,000 in there for construction observation. That's billed hourly, but this would be on top of whatever quote. So what we would need to do is not only approve the task order, which would then approve going out for RFP and set a date to get quotes back. Okay? So we've kind of been banner-ing this around, and I just said it's an opportune time. I'd like to make a motion to approve the task order for seventeen thousand five hundred to put out an RFP for construction of a firehouse apron.
Exactly.
I just want to clarify that the task order is not seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to put out the RFP. The task order is, I don't know, nine thousand or something to put out the RFP and then other numbers on top of it to manage the process if we choose to go ahead with the construction.
Right, that's what I said, there's 5,000 for construction.
No, no, I know, but I just really wanted to clarify that because like seventeen thousand dollars for an RFP for the firehouse apron like made me choke when I first saw it, so.
Well, that'd be specific. Eight thousand eight hundred is for design documents.
Right, great.
Twelve fifty is for permitting. Two, twenty-five hundred is for bidding, and then 5,000 for construction.
Great, thank you.
This is out of budget, and so it would have to come from some capital account, and the request would be to have this come out of our firehouse capital account, which is currently three hundred and eleven thousand dollars in. All of the money, the cost for the task order and whatever the RFP would come out of the capital account for the firehouse.
Do you want to amend the motion to that?
I will, I want any other discussion before we do that.
Brian's okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. All right, so, you know, to keep things moving on, to amend the task, to amend it to approve the task order for seventeen thousand five hundred for Thai Yvonne to turn the documents as quick as possible, and then go out with the, we can go out for the RFP and bidding. I think I'm going to stop right there because we didn't talk about a date. I'd like to set a date.
Brian, it seems like she wants to say something.
Look, I don't want to be out of order, but our goal was to have this ready to go out for next Monday.
Oh, okay.
Just in an effort to turn it very quickly. Recognizing you don't have a meeting before then, I think your motion is appropriate in terms of if you authorize us to finish the design and put the bidding documents together, and then we'll put it out to bid as soon as those documents.
I want to add that date into it. So we would expect doc, we would expect them, can we do two weeks for a, to get bids back? To get bids back?
You can, yeah.
So we can vote on it on April 9th?
No.
Oh, no, so, yeah, that's the thing you need to, you need to award. So I had, I had looked at the calendar. There's a, in the task order, there's an anticipated schedule, and I had assumed award would be on April 23rd. I don't physically think we can do it for the 9th.
Okay. All right, you're right. It's okay.
We meet, yeah, we'll, we'll meet on the 23rd, so.
Is that the right date? I didn't know if you wanted to try and have a social meeting, but I really do think that's as quickly as we can do it.
That's something they're talking about later in the meeting is rescheduling this 4th Tuesday, so that, it would be the 2nd.
Okay.
So we're good with the date?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to go back to the amendment here to approve the task order for seventeen thousand five hundred, prepare the documents, prepare the bid documents, go, you know, have the documents released by Monday, which would be April 1st. April 1st. And then bid award by April 23rd, with the money all to be used from the fire, our capital account.
Sorry, that's when we're, that's when the board's going to decide, but when are the actual bids due?
23rd.
Then you can't. No, I did two on the 19th, and then.
Bids due on the 19th.
Award.
Bids are due on the 19th, sorry.
And then we are on.
So I, if we put it out to advertising, we would finish the documents by Monday. They'd be posted to your paper of record by the 4th, and then that would give us two weeks. Bids would be to the 19th, and we can award on the 23rd.
I'll just look on the 23rd.
You got all that, right, Martina?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Kind of another new kind of item, something I've been working on for a while, is our phone system with here in Village Hall. We're currently using Superior as our phone, with Frontier as a backbone for it. And with all the changes coming forward in technology, there's an opportunity to move forward here with voice-over IP, which means it's an internet phone. So I don't know if you looked into documents, but if you, any place in any office where there's an internet connection, you can have a phone. And all the technology is there to give us a lot more comfort, nature, convenience, transfer calls, receive calls, failover calls, there should be no use for us missing a call because of here in the office. And this, these quotes cover all of Village Hall, with your fire, all our staff here, all PD, highway, water, wastewater. All right? So all encompassing, one thing. To kind of give you a reference, today, if you add up all of that, we pay one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars of money for phones. So I was able to get two bids. I wasn't able to get a third, reached out to Frontier, but didn't get a response. But from Archtop Fiber, they offered us a three-year, these are now lease, backup. Currently, today, we own the phones. We did them outright buy, and eighteen thirty-four is what we pay for just having phones, or we own them. These are lease phones, right? So if something goes wrong, you make a phone call, you get a new one. Three, Archtop came back with a quote of one thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-nine cents, all encompassing, for a monthly three-year contract.
And what are we currently paying?
One thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
So this would save us seven hundred dollars a month?
Correct.
Five hundred dollars a month?
Right. One hundred to eight hundred, it's like seven, seven.
Okay.
Seven hundred. PCA broke it up into two pieces. They did give us a buyout price, right, to go forward and buy it that we did for Village Hall, firehouse and everything, and water, wastewater, and highway. The one that cost me to buy everything would be twelve thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, but they also offer the same thing, a lease price. Village Hall is two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents a month. And the fire department, excuse me, I had backwards. Village Hall is four hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents, and the firehouse is two hundred and seventy-eight and eighty-seven, and then add it up, but it's like eight hundred and something dollars. Okay?
So that's, that's seven hundred dollars, but yeah.
Police, what are they doing for water and sewer?
Yeah, what about water and sewer?
No, they, so, in the village price, it includes water and sewer, like before.
Okay, got it.
So that's all encompassing. Village Hall, highway, water, wastewater, is in PCA Village Hall bid.
What about police?
Police is a separate one, which was, which was two eighty-seven.
Oh, you said fire, is that?
What?
Fire was.
Fire is in Village Hall.
Fire was two seventy-eight. Right, when you said two seventy-eight, you said fire. Is that fire or police?
No, the two seventy, the, two seventy-eight eighty-seven is just police, just that one.
Literally just that one.
Got that? You clear?
Yes.
So fire is included in, so, fire is included in Village Hall?
Fires, as I said before, fires included in Village Hall.
Okay.
Fire, fire staff, everything here, plus water, wastewater, and highway, is included in the Village Hall. So you have to add the two together to get a couple of house.
Yeah.
So the two is, what?
Four seventeen plus two seventy-eight?
Twelve sixteen.
It's a little over seven hundred dollars. Six ninety-eight, six ninety-five?
Yeah. Now, one is our technology provider, okay? Which we currently use through PCA, which does our technology, and they offer a phone service as well. The other is a phone company. So it's Archtop, which is not only a fiber provider, but a phone company as well. So other than that, the thing that sits on your desk, it's the same. Right, it just has same functions, has all failover, all the bells and whistles, that goes, that goes with it.
Yeah.
Now, a different question. Archtop is installed, because this is not the installed price. There's additional costs for installation and the SAG-NOMA costs.
That's PCA. SAG-NOMA is PCA.
Right, and so there's installation costs.
But all in total, yeah, but it's all wraps up into that one-time monthly cert, if you lease it, that's your monthly lease price. Follow me?
So it actually looks like there's a one-time cost plus the monthly charge?
No, no. No. There, when you lease, we pay, we get them installed, and rather paying any one-time charge, we pay the monthly lease charge. I know, if you look at their total and their SAG-NOMA, it's broke out because it's non-recurring and recurring, and it adds up to whether you're paying the one-time twelve thousand seventy-three, for instance, or the four seventeen eighty-five.
I think we need to get some clarity on this because the way that this is drafted, there's a one-time cost of twelve thousand dollars, and then there's a monthly fee of four hundred and seventeen. I know that you are saying that that is not the.
I have confirmed that with them. We do not pay the one-time monthly cost. That's the buyout cost for the phones. And then you own the phones. For the twelve thousand, you own the phones.
And this is a really poorly drafted quote? I'm not.
That's one time to explain it to you.
Yeah.
Because I asked a lot of questions, and the twelve, for in the Village Hall, the twelve thousand oh seventy-three twenty is the buyout cost to purchase the phones. You get service and everything else, right? But now you've owned, now you own all the phones. And the other one is you pay, PCA is a five-year term for the lease price.
I'd say, I don't know how it, it really reads like it's one-time plus monthly.
It's not.
Okay, so there's one-time cost, and then twelve thousand dollars or whatever, then zero dollars if third-party leases executed. And then monthly charges is two seventy-eight eighty-seven plus estimated third-party lease payment of three hundred and twenty dollars. I'm looking at the place right now.
On PCA.
So it looks like, so instead of the twelve, so I, so instead of like twelve thousand plus two seventy-eight, it looks like it's two seventy-eight plus three twenty per month. Yes. It's got to be one or the other.
It's two seventy-eight eighty-seven per month.
Plus the estimated third-party lease payment of three hundred and twenty dollars for all intents. Look at the, the green button.
Right, I do, I have that right here. This.
I'm just looking at the green button, I'm pretty disturbed, so you just look at us.
Right.
Yeah. Very, it says plus, the fine print.
Oh, literally, I'm sure you.
Yeah.
All right. Has made third-party lease payments. So I think, all right, then I'm just.
Yeah, I think we need to table this until we get some clarity on this one with the actual.
All right.
Yeah.
I can do it, yeah.
We can talk about it, you know, early April. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think saving money on our phones is a great idea. I think moving away from Frontier is a fantastic idea. I think having voice-over IP makes a lot of sense. I think leasing our phones is a great idea. I think we just need to get some clarity on what this actually.
Okay, we'll do that. That's not how I was explaining it.
Did you leave feeling for?
Certainly, this one doesn't say.
I still here.
Which one?
I know.
You need a little clarity.
I'm a little bit agnostic yet on it, only because, I'll be honest with you, one is a technology provider, which we work with PCA all the time. The other is a telephone company. My bias would be I'd rather deal with telephone.
My question would be what, what kind of service, would we support service that we've been getting from the line that we're with? And what, what would be the benefit to owning the phones unless you're going to, I guess, keep them way beyond the, you know, the extended of a lease? And then we've done that before, we've always leased. I don't know, but the answer is?
Well, we own here, and it's been a problem.
Okay.
Right, I mean, comparing apples to apples in terms of what we have today, where we own our phone and have to deal with phone and getting service and getting everything fixed, and phones being outdated and not having features and not having the flexibility to change things, all that stuff.
All that tells me lease is better because it's, it's, makes you, you're able to be more nimble if you're not stuck with equipment that's outdated the way technology is changing.
And it's, and, you're not stuck with all the technology, and it's a simple phone call to say, change this number, add this number, roll it over to here, you know, all this stuff. It's all pretty automated.
Yeah, I mean, I think it all makes a great deal of sense, including leasing. Both prices seem like they're going to be less than what we're currently paying, and so we just need to get some clarity on that.
All right, I'll just, I'll just serve you, yeah.
Okay, great.
We'll bring you. Okay. Daycare center zoning code resolution.
Right. So as I told you all in our last, I don't know, normal meeting, I feel like we've got fifty-three of them sent. We do not currently allow daycare centers anywhere in the village. A daycare center is a different kind of daycare institution than, it is not a domiciled daycare. It is a daycare that takes place in a building that is not somebody's home. In talking to Tim Decker, who helped draft our previous, our current zoning code, he thinks that this is just frankly an oversight, that we didn't include it. We currently allow educational use in schools in Gateway Business District and the Village Center, not the residential area. So I am proposing in this resolution of scheduling a public hearing, what I'm proposing in the law that the public hearing will be about, that we allow daycare centers by permit in the Gateway Center and the Village Center in the same way that we do the Gateway District and the Village Center, in the same way that we do educational institutions. And then adding some teeth to the law, you can see from the law that I'm proposing, that there's actual permit requirements, there's site plan requirements, there's this, that, and the other, to give the planning board something really to balance against, which, this is a new thing for us, what do you? The, the, I don't know, Jeff, who's representing the people who want to move into the, into one of the buildings that used to be occupied by the primary school, is here if we have any questions for him. But that's buildings in the Gateway Business District. And so this resolution is just to set a public hearing for this law in the same way that we just had with one for St. Elroy last night. I don't anticipate this being a huge big deal, but you never know, and we should make sure that the neighbors and everyone has an opportunity to comment on this. So that's what this is about. I would propose that we give ourselves a month and perhaps have a public hearing on this, you know, after.
In May?
No, actually, it'd be great if we could do it after our regular meeting on the 4th Thursday in April. Fourth Tuesday in April. That we're going to be changing our meeting to, it'd be like, we're getting out of order, but it would be great if, you know, that meeting's going to be at 3:00. It'd be great if we could have the public hearing at like a 5:00 or something.
It's good to have a public hearing at that time.
I would rather have the public hearing at 5:00 or 6:00 than at 3:00.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying, but like, as long as we're all still in the building that afternoon.
Yeah, the proposal is to have those at 3:30, so.
Okay, great, that's even better than it would be at, you know, 5:30 or 6:00.
And people can always submit written.
They can always submit written comments.
Written comments, too.
5:00 would be great. I'm hearing from Peter Galore.
So we're going to change the meeting time to 5:00 for that, for that meeting?
No, we're going to keep our meeting at 3:30. We're going to have the public hearing at 5:00.
I just want to understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Jeff, have you had a chance to review, and is this time to do a little good with you guys, or what's up?
Yeah, you know, the, I forget the date that they're leaving where they are now, so we're trying to coordinate that timing. Their plan is to open in, running back in September. And so if it gets approved and includes a site plan approval process, then we'll need time to go through that process with the planning board.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, they got to work out a lot of details with the building, at least in the building, whatever, right?
They mostly actually have to work out a lot of details from what I understand. I had a meeting with them, they're very nice, with the state, and the state won't even look at their application if the zoning, if the underlying zoning won't allow it. And so like, us having the zoning in place will help them really move forward kind of on all of it.
Exactly. They've been working on their, they have a license currently with New York State. They have to change that and get a new license because they're changing their location, and the licenses are building and location-specific. And one of the requirements, as Lydia said, is that it has to be allowed in the municipality. And currently, it's vague whether or not it's allowed, so this will clear that up for them. But they've already been working on that application, so as soon as it gets passed through you guys, that's their final thing to go back to New York State, and then they go through the final approval process. But yeah, that'll take a little time, too.
And I mean, and the point of all of this, I mean, yes, they were very nice, and Jeff came to us and asked for this, but really, the point of all of this is that in the, no, in the needs survey that Red Hook responds commissioned and put out, done by Contra Progress, there was a real shortage of daycare options available in this area. And I know that, at least one, that we've had in this village for 20 years, it's domiciled, it's closing. And so, you know, this is a real need that the village has. I think this sort of goes along with like the housing conversations we have and all of the rest of it, and making sure that families really feel welcome here in the village, so.
That's what we're proposing, that's really something solid.
Yeah, and we're only proposing it for the two zones where we currently allow educational purposes.
Let me ask, why wouldn't we think about putting it in other places? It's just not appropriate to expand it anywhere else?
Mostly because I'm trying to get this done faster. And I think if we propose it in the residential district, that will cause a lot of stir and dronk that I don't particularly want to have this particular project wrapped up in. We might do that actually as far as the zoning mode update if we're not planning.
It would be worth a look, for sure. Because I do, I mean, it's acute. If you look at the, you decided the pattern of progress study, there's a lot of studies out there. It's one of the biggest needs of, not just, you know, people, but I wish, make people understand businesses, too.
Yeah.
It hurts businesses a lot.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that this is right near the hospital, nurses can come in, drop their kids off, nurses, teachers, what, nurses, teachers, nurses, doctors, whoever, right?
Right. And my goal is just to be a daycare center.
In this specific case, yes.
You know, there's no future in terms of coming, something bigger, better, bigger, different.
Right, there's, there will be one tenant in one building. It was a school. Yeah, they get, yeah, the initial school.
Talking about what this business is.
All right, we set the meeting.
So what's set a meeting then?
Great, so I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution that's on your screens, to schedule the public hearing for April 23rd at 5:00 PM at Village Hall.
One second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Before you skip past me, I sent you all a resolution like 20 minutes ago that I very much want us to pass today. It was brought to my attention this morning that the village currently, according to the municipal Home Rule, Home Rule Law, the village board must receive, the members of the village board must receive a final draft law 10 days, barring Sundays, in advance of a vote on that law. If we want to receive that electronically and not by mail, or, I don't know, or strong courage, then we have to unanimously adopt the electronic delivery method as outlined in Section 20(c) of the Municipal Home Rule, Home Rule Law. So basically, I wanted to make sure we pass this before the Sixth Mulberry Law, before I distributed the Sixth Mulberry Law to all of you. So that's why I'm doing this today and at the very last minute. The resolution is very simple. Whereas pursuant to Section 20(c)(3) of the Municipal Home Rule Law, the village board must, if it chooses to deliver draft local laws electronically to its membership, unanimously adopt a resolution authorizing electronic delivery thereof. And the Board of Trustees recognizes that electronic delivery is both more efficient and less costly than requiring draft local laws to be mailed to each member. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Trustees unanimously adopt the electronic delivery method of draft local laws outlined in Section 20(c) of Municipal Home Rule Law. I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second.
Great.
How did you even?
Victoria told Emily last night, and one thing led to another.
This is, this is pretty much procedural. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, this is very procedural, and really something only a lawyer can love.
All right. Spring malt sale. Last year, we did a spring malt sale. It was very good. Really, we moved a lot of product, which is good, created a lot of space for new product to be coming in and going in, which is, we're in the same position again this year. We have a lot of product to get rid of, to dispose of. So following the same thing that we did last year to try to move some product, the resolution for the 2024 spring malt sale will be, whereas the village will sell malt at a discount rate of $30 per yard, and $15 a yard for bulk orders for five yards or more, whereas the village will waive the $150 loading fee for malt picked up from the highway department, and whereas delivery within the village will remain free, delivery outside the village will still have a fee of $50. Therefore, if resolved, the spring sale will go on. In fact, April 1st to the end of June 2028.
Great, great. Second.
Session.
$150 plus the 10 yards, all right?
All in favor, say aye. Flycar. Oh, a month ago, we put the flycar out for bid. We don't have anything else on it.
Uh, no.
You have it, Martina?
Yes, Brian sent you an email. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to use Auction International. I'm very pleased with the outcome of the auction for the old 5967 EMS flycar. I request that you accept the high bid of $4,750 for the purchase. Should you have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact me on this.
I make a motion to accept the auction price of $4,700 whatever dollars.
Second.
Second.
Great.
By the way, this money is going forward to help reduce the cost to pay off our one of our other loans in the, in the firehouse for another car. All in favor, say aye. Speaking of second of the month meetings, we moved them to Wednesday, we want to go back to Tuesday.
At 3:30.
3:30? Is it that time?
Yes.
Make a motion to have our second meeting of the month on Tuesdays, the. Make a motion to have our second meeting of the month on Tuesdays, the fourth, second Tuesday of the month, at three thirty.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second just after the second.
Lydia, you want to talk about the Z B A planning board?
Oh, yeah, so every year we have someone's term expires on the Z B A, the planning board, for the planning board. We put out a call for folks, we also asked the people who are currently holding those positions, whose term expired, if they wanted to continue. We received two applicants for the planning board, one is the current member of the planning board, and one is one of the alternates, and we received one applicant for the Z B A, the current member of the Z B A. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint John Clark to the planning board.
Second.
For another five-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Christopher Tavener to the zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The alternate is delighted to let John Clark have the term, and he will be thrilled to step in when we need him to step in.
We made the alternate?
Yeah.
Do we need to reappoint him as an alternate?
We do not.
The next is a request from me, speaking as a Rotary member, to ask for permission to use Village Hall to hold members for a bike drive committee that is sponsored by Rotary, so kind of a normal request, somebody outside wants to use Village Hall, we approve the use of the Village Hall for that public, public service. So these meetings would be through April and into May at various times, not to conflict with any of our other previous scheduled meetings, because times will vary from week to week, et cetera, based on availability of getting people here. There's currently a fifteen-member committee that is working on this project, which I'm chairing, and I would, given the size of the group, I needed a larger space, why not use public space which was here for us to use? Well, I can make a motion to accept my own application for scheduling meetings here at Village Hall for Rhinebeck Rotary Bike Drive.
I feel like you should.
We'll do without you, how's that?
I'll make, I'll make the motion, it's not a motion, it's a bill, it's all.
I'll second it, I would like to say that, you know, we prefer specific times, but I appreciate that you're in flux.
And, and as available as around.
It's down the bill, I won't interfere.
Yeah, I got that.
We have to schedule.
I got that.
I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, cheers. All right, this is a change, last Saturday was the regular scheduled Lions mini, Lions Club Easter egg hunt at the mini park.
Said we had the ninety.
Obviously got rained out, and they would like to reschedule to this coming Saturday at, at, at the mini park, same rules, same terms, same everything.
What was the conversation about moving into Rockefeller?
So, I don't get into that, so here's the issue, I'll go, I'll be right up front, that storm on Saturday and the pending rain that we're supposed to get tonight, tomorrow, and et cetera, the majority of that mini park in the springtime is wet, right, and there's a lot of runoff that comes down into it, so the usable surface area and everything else is, makes it difficult to use the mini park. So I would like to propose that we still accept their application, but ask them to relocate it to the Rockefeller Park, which has been all cleaned up, ready to go, and is accessible, and not, and not wet.
I'll second that motion.
Any other, any discussion?
I'm just looking, so fifty to sixty people, is that, that's parents and children?
It comes such with multiple Easter egg hunts being held at the same time, so who knows?
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only tricky part with any of our parks is there's limited parking, so hopefully people who are local will walk, ride bikes.
Rockefeller has, has accessible parking on the road, though.
Yeah, the park, sure, sure, yeah.
All right, all in favor, all in favor to approve the application, but to relocate it to Rockefeller Park on Rockefeller Road, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Next, this is also just me thinking out loud again in terms of going forward. We've had some good successes with Trustee Penny, who no longer be with us, but on his knowledge and skill in terms of providing advice on how to best use social media, all right, and give us say, it's best if you can do it this way, or this way, or that way, it's by no way a means to say that John in his new role will have access to our website and look at technology or do any of that kind of stuff, but it's a way for not only Martina and I to seek advice, but if you on the board are wanting to do something and you want to use a platformer, and you want to say how, based on your experience, how would that roll out, or how would you suggest to do it, it's a phone call to John and get advice and counsel, and that's really all it is. It's not a paid position, it's not a full-time position, it's a phone call to John to say, hey, what do you think? And that's all I'm asking for, is the ability to open up to all of us, since we have a person who has a lot of journalistic skills, a lot of skills, and in all of the platforms, not just Facebook, but multiple, multiple platforms. If we have a question, we can have a resource to go to. That's really it. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Penny as a communication advisor for us.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I'm a little confused if this is like an informal or formal position, and, and why, I think John can be terrific at it, but if it's a formal position, I feel like then sort of the board has a process, if it's an informal position, then, you know, I'll full speed ahead, and so I'm a little confused about that.
Yeah, I don't know how it's gonna evolve, right? It's a good question, because it hasn't evolved yet, and it's gonna take shape into, I've just had good experience in terms of getting advice, how do we do this, what's the best plan, how do you roll this out? So I would say right now it's more of an informal position, not a, we're not, we're, I'm not going out and advertising for people to, to have, make changes to our database, or make changes to our website, it's not that, you know?
So my question is, you know, I mean, all of us have like our own little pitching cabinets and people that we ask for advice on things, you know, is there a reason why, especially because like we're not entirely sure what the scope of the position is and all the rest of it, is there any particular reason why John can't just be like a resource for us, but not one that is officially appointed by the Board of Trustees to be a resource sort of for us?
I don't, that's up to you, I mean, up to you.
I, you know, I, I'm, I'm gonna say, I wanna say, it's up to you guys, you know, you guys all have a number, and, and if you, whatever comfort lever, and I wasn't pushing for this or anything.
No, he was.
So this is something the mayor wanted, quite frankly, and, and I told him I would, I'm there to help, and so whatever, however that manifests itself, that, that would be fine.
And I looked at more as a common person to go to, rather than you going to somebody, you going to somebody, me going to somebody, and you going to somebody, right, and now we have all this mixture of things, somebody that kind of already knows what we have and what we have to offer to kind of help keep us focused.
I mean, it's certainly like John's knowledge has been invaluable these past few months, and, you know, I, I think having that knowledge, part of our collective sort of human resources, I think is really, you know, like, would be a wonderful thing to have. My only concern isn't specific to John, it's, it's more just like, if the village board is going to be creating a communications advisor role, then I think we need to create a communications advisor role, and then, you know, go through some sort of process to collect people who might be interested in forming that communications advisor role, just like we did with the planning board and the zoning board, you know, and then appoint whoever might rise to the service in that. I, I think if we just want to keep John in our phones and in our hearts, like, that's, you know, that's.
You guys, I don't, I.
And I'm not voting on this. And I do think if it's an advisor position, then the question is, you need to spell out what's, what's expected, what's the, what are the roles, what's expected of us, what's expected of the advisor, and again, this is not, this is just all about sort of whether this is an informal use of a great resource in the village, or if we have to go through a board appointment, then it becomes more complicated with.
I explained to you what my thoughts were.
Right, right.
I explained to you how I thought it would roll out.
Right.
I explained to the, what the, what the job role, what the job encompasses.
A useful test in my mind is if we think that, you know, five years from now, say none of us are on the board, does this role still exist? Is it still, still something that's useful to the board in general?
I have no question, how do we know?
Well, not to add fun to this, but one of the draft recommendations from the comp plan is to create a communications advisory sort of committee, council, something, something, something.
But that was a more bigger, broader scope.
Yeah, so, and, you know, like, there's clearly like a desire and a need in the village for like an increased level of like communication savvy.
That was to hire a person and put them on staff.
They backed off of the hiring the person and putting it on staff, and they said, you know, increased level of communications would be one for all, and if the village board would like to do that by creating a committee, or by having a person, or whatever, that's kind of up to the village board, but like, I think there might be an opportunity here, given what the comp plan is going to be saying about this, to potentially create like a volunteer position, almost like Kathy Tepmeyer, you know, with this kind of knowledge, with sort of, you know, and then if John would like to be that person, he could certainly throw his hat into the ring, we can discuss that, but I think, I think as long as there's no sort of official job description, I think the Board of Trustees and our official actions should stay out of this conversation.
I, I, but I, but I think it could be, but I think Vanessa makes a really good point.
Yeah.
It could be really a worthwhile position.
Yeah.
Among the other functions of, and the capabilities in the village that we draw upon, the boards and future boards do have somebody who they can, who they can work to.
Who they can.
So I think that, I think you made a really good point with that.
Yeah.
So I, I think I would, I, the way I would do this, I would prefer to make this, I think, a bit more formal, and go out, make a little description, say what the role for the board members, and that way they're parameters, and then we all know what's going on, and then say, we'll go out and.
We'll give it, we'll, we'll, you know, who knows, it's a normal thing.
I, I think, I think, I think it's a, it's a need that we have, but I think if we're gonna make a board appointment, we should do the board appointment process.
Okay.
And I, I agree with like the, the sort of like impetus to the, to your, to your query of like, it has been invaluable having John's expertise on the board, and how do we make sure that we keep that, and I think it's a very good question for us to like make sure that we stay on top of, I just want to make sure that we do it in a good way.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's.
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, okay, great.
I thought you'd been there.
He just wanted to have. It hasn't stopped you guys before, so.
Trying to get, trying to get you guys thinking about the future.
No, no, I think it's a very good thought, and I think.
Yeah.
We're actually, I think, elevated.
And for the record, you know, accessible to you guys anytime, if you want to write anything by me, just inform.
And how you gonna say no, because we don't have any.
Thank you, John.
How you gonna say no?
Including, including the new member of the board.
All right, so we'll table that.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.
All right, last thing, discuss employee, volunteer, voter.
Oh, so we're gonna, we're gonna, can we, can we table it?
No, I think we have.
Make a motion to postpone it for future.
Well, you have to answer the motion.
We have a motion, we had a motion to start the discussion.
I had a motion in a second, so you have to vote.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna vote nay on the appointment process.
All in favor? Opposed?
All right, I get abstained. Not rejecting myself, sorry, guys.
Fair enough.
Legs tough enough. Without me rejecting myself.
Who's taking the lead on the next one?
I can take more than anyone. So, given the number of volunteers I seem to be sort of like working with at any given time, I realized that we have our ethics code, which is very focused on money and like financial kerfuffles, but we don't have like an actual code of conduct for kind of anyone. I mean, employees get evaluated on their code of conduct and they get fired if their code of conduct's terrible, but for. Ish, you know, you know, they, there, there's ways to handle employees, there's, there's currently no way to handle a volunteer who sits on a committee and has like the, the authority of the village Rhinebeck behind them if they go off the rails, and I think that exploring a code of conduct here that our volunteers and our, you know, I mean, all of us, I think, should, should sign and, and, and consider, I think would be a good idea. I was chatting with Elizabeth about it, the town actually has one of these, and so I got a copy of it from her, I'm happy to share it, the tone of it is not, I think, the same tone that we would want to take, but, you know, if, if anybody's willing to help me with this, that would be great, you know, thank you. Martina's also, you know, I've sort of handed this to her as her role of sort of H R, but, you know, do we think that a code of conduct is a good idea, should we spend, should one of us, two of us, three of us spend time on this, is this something that, I think it's really important, because at the moment, there's no way to remove someone from a volunteer board unless it's at the end of their term, or unless they've violated an ethics, a provision of the ethics code. We could put a lot of pressure on them, but there's literally no mechanism for the village to remove someone from a volunteer committee who's gone off the rails, in a way that doesn't violate our ethics code, so.
Doesn't everyone serve at the pleasure of the board, though?
They're appointed to terms, and it's not really.
Really, not all the volunteer.
Yeah, it's not really clear, like, how that appointment can be just sort of taken away.
We have many committees, and they're just committee appointments, and, you know, well, you, you ought to support a committee, there's no term.
Right.
Right?
Right, but, so I.
They have boards as well.
So I'm dealing with, specifically, the reason why I'm raising this is because I deal with the planning board, I deal with the zoning board, and the comp plan committee does not have.
Planning board and zoning board have rules, and they have ethical rules as a result of planning and zoning board, as their appointments, so I don't think it applies to them, I think it applies to the other committees outside of there.
No, it would apply to all of them, and the, the concerns that I am thinking about, that I'm not gonna talk about in public meetings, are not currently addressed by our ability, by our current code for the planning board and the zoning board, for the planning board and the zoning board, and also for committees where there are no terms, there's, like, there's, there's no sort of official way for us to sort of like lean in and kind of be like, hey, you're really abusing your authority, we're just gonna remove you, like, there's sort of like no mechanism, there's no process, there's no nothing, there's no like first warning, second warning, there's no, there's no nothing that we can lean against.
And I would say, I would also use it to make, to make positive, that it would lay out a series of expectations, that if you're on, if you're, how you're gonna behave, if you're on a, you know, no fighting, no biting, you know, you know.
I think it's a good idea.
No throwing the names of Rhinebeck around.
I think we need a lot more discussion, a lot of work on.
Totally, but I just wanted to make sure that this was something that we're all interested in enough.
There's gotta be a lot of, it's gotta.
Yeah, I'm sure there are.
I think if we're looking into it and figure out what's.
Great.
So I cover here.
Great. Eric and I will worry about that.
Any other business, any other business over here? There are none, make a motion.
I'd like to thank John for his service. This is John's last.
We're gonna try to make the committee meeting tomorrow night if I can for.
Oh, great.
Okay. The budget, at least for a little bit, and I gotta do the same thing I'm doing today, which is there, 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 there.
Oh, God, well, thank you, John.
Gary, Gary.
Oh, yes!
So I want to get the official thing, I don't have the official thing yet, so, you know, I'm gonna hang on, because it, because there's a little bit more conversation I want to have about this when we do this.
Can we just say anything?
We could say anything, you know, but I think there's a lot, I want to do more than just say, oh, congratulations. So hold on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good. Make a, I made a motion to, I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.